Murray, Robert, Lumberton Township, Union. I have the tough privilege of going after the awards ceremony, which is always a difficult night to present, but an awesome night as well. So I'm Greg Bird with DCO Energy. We are a New Jersey EPMC qualified energy services company. I met with Robert and Dr. Murray a few weeks ago, just discussing what the Energy Savings Improvement Program is, or ESIP, and kind of the process to get from where you are today to evaluate what a potential project will look like. So I'm going to run you through kind of the process of what we discussed and where the district would have to go to take on this type of initiative. Just to give you some background on who DCO is, so we're based here locally in Marnesville, New Jersey, so very close. I live in Mercer County, so for me it's very, very close backyard. We've worked with over eighty-five public entities here in the state of New Jersey alone on these types of projects, and actually going to begin construction with the Willingboro Township District on their ESIP project in the coming weeks. So what is ESIP? What is the Energy Savings Improvement Program? So it's a budget-neutral financing mechanism for public entities to take advantage of. And it was set in place, it's a piece of legislation. It was enacted in two thousand nine, it was amended in two thousand twelve to add the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities oversight. So there is oversight from the state of New Jersey in this program. The benefit of ESIP, as you can see on the presentation, is there's no taxpayer impact because the upgrades are funded through the energy savings of the upgrades. The, if you go through lease, purchase, or bond referendum, again, you understand that you're taking it out of the operational budget, or you're taking, you're asking the taxpayers to support the referendum. ESIP is funded through your current energy spend. So that is the benefit. No net-net, no budget increase to your current and existing budget. There is no capital outlay required, so the, and I'll go through the process of what the energy audit is, and then what ESIP is, and the steps you have to go through to implement the Energy Savings Improvement Program, but there is no out-of-pocket cost to the district So this is how it works, right? How is it budget-neutral? The current utility spend, so you can see, that is what Lumberton Township School District spends on electric, natural gas, water, sewer, oil, if applicable. On an annual basis, that's going to continue to increase. And I would say, I'm not really providing you anything groundbreaking, that number's going to continue to rise, right? Everything's getting more expensive, I think everybody knows that, not just in energy, but in the world we live in today. And what an energy services company does, like DCO does, we go in and we try to find ways to save energy, so anything that consumes energy or lets energy out, lights, for example, that's your big energy saver, rooftop units, boilers, chillers, HVAC equipment, your windows, tighten that up, door sweeps, stuff like that. There's a lot of energy measures to fund big improvements for your district. So now I want to talk about the process, as you can already hear, my first three minutes, I probably use like seven acronyms, so just kind of going through all of them. Again, if you have any questions, just stop me and feel free to ask. But the local government energy audit, or the LGEA, is the first step. You cannot complete an ESIP project without the local government energy audits. The benefit is, so on your utility bills, you see something called SBC, societal benefits charge. You're paying for these programs whether you take advantage of them or not. So the local government energy audit would not be done by DCO, it's a state contracted entity called TRC. So that, it would be an application process, we'd have to go on, go through with Dr. Murray and Mr. Kraft, and go through that, submit the application, and so forth. So you can see, the completes, submit the application, TRC would come on-site at no cost to the district, conduct the site visits, do the walkthroughs, look at every piece of equipment. Then at the end, it'll typically take about three to six months for them to complete that, to get you the actual reports. Then they'll schedule an exit meeting, so every school would get its own report to evaluate its current energy spend and usage. Then the final reports would be provided, and then typically what we'll do is we'll put that in what we call a benchmarking report, and analyze it and normalize it with weather data, with light schools in New Jersey nationally, normalize it with weather data over thirty years. So this is tough to see, and I know we, Mr. Kraft and Dr. Murray and I talked about it, it's really just, the most, the biggest part of the LGA and ESIP process is a lot of data we need, because we need to document everything. So it'd really just be working with the district and them investing their, while there's no cost, it takes their time, it's going to take time to compile the utility bills. We need to provide TRC fourteen months of electric, natural gas, water, sewer, oil for every account you have, and even, and your, I see your solar that you have. So we would need production of that, et cetera. So that, that's kind of what would be required of a district. So you can see here, electric, natural gas, it would just be for every account, and just general building information. So that is now what we call the LGEA. So once that audit is done, I went through the process pretty quickly there, that audit would be done, we would take it and see, kind of evaluate with the district what your facility goals are. And then we would say, does an ESIP really make sense? Does a rebate incentive program make sense? Or what's the best route for the district to take at this point, given the goals of what you have? And it'll probably take, again, six to eight, twelve months in that range, to get from where we are today, submit application, and get those LGEAs, local government, energy audits completed. Then the next is, so you can see, now I go over to shift over to what ESIP is, there is a RFP process. So to select a DCO, an energy services company, you'd have to go out to bid for competitive contracting, so you, it really allows you to select based on price of factors, qualifications. Where the real work gets into is what's called the investment grade audit. So that's where your selected energy services company would come in and take a much deeper dive than kind of those initial LGEAs, and identify key goals that the district needs to achieve. Some districts may want windows, doesn't have great payback in terms of energy savings, but again, it comes down to the district's goals. The energy savings plan would be what the district selects, and again, so you're probably at like a twelve, from where we are today, to get to that investment grade audit completed, energy savings plan, you're probably twelve, fifteen, eighteen months out from getting close to construction and financing. So those are like the timelines, if we submitted the application today. Then we would work closely with your architect, engineer of record, to design those energy conservation measures. Then we would finance the project with your bond counsel, financial advisor, and then work with your engineer of record to design those ECMs, and then we act as your general contractor. The benefit of ESIP is, I say, we're the one broker-choke, so all the subcontractors' contracts would lie with us. So the only contract the district has would be with DCO or your energy services company. So again, it's, I know I kind of went through it pretty quick, I know I talk fast, but essentially where you're at today, if we submitted, I ballparked at twelve to eighteen months, depending on how quickly TRC can get through those LGEAs, to get the investment grade audit done. The difference between the investment grade audit and the energy savings plan is, the investment grade audit, we might evaluate five, six, seven million dollars worth of upgrades, but only four or five million may self-fund, or it may, you might only want these four or five million dollars worth of measures. So the IGA is like on your laundry list of upgrades you can achieve, the energy savings plan is what you want, and your goals. And then really just next steps are, confirm this is something you want to explore further, get those, the LGA application submitted, and then allow TRC to be on-site to conduct those local government energy audits. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any reason why the state would not come out and do the audit?
No, no, it's just, you get to the queue, so, once you submit it, I worked with another district in Union County, about two months before, I was told it was going to take fifteen months, and then I was helping them through this kind of same situation you're in now, getting started, and then they head out of sight like next month. So it just depends on the amount of influx of applications, so I say, you know, just get it in, and then, you know, I, we can push and see how fast we can get them to get it done, but no one's ever been denied from getting the free energy audit.
And through this process, is there any, I'm thinking of like those home shows, any unforeseen problems that would then come into play in the whole audit possibly?
Yeah, I would say that's, so we're construction man, so it becomes a construction project, I would say that's more during construction. Typically, we would carry a bucket of contingency or an allowance for unforeseen, right, you don't know what's behind the wall, but a lot of the ESIP is to retrofit, so, you know, lights we may replace, or just retrofit them with new bulbs, rooftop units, you're not typically like revamping anything, if there's no issues now, you're typically okay, but whether it's DCO or another energy services company, they should carry a bucket of contingency to make sure there's unforeseen's cover. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. At this time, I welcome the, I guess, a few minutes to change the presentation, and we'll welcome the district grant assessment team for their update.
So I'm Erica, I'm the Assistant Principal of Discipline Two to Eight. I also serve as our School Safety Specialist, and the Threat Assessment Team Co-Chair.
And I'm Lisa, and I'm a social worker from grades four through eight, I'm on the Child Study Team, and I coach every Threat Assessment Team as well.
So we're just here to kind of tell you what the Threat Assessment Team has been up to, what it's about, and anything like that. So this is our Threat Assessment Team from all three schools. We have people from the classroom, people from counseling and mental health, two administrators, myself and Dr. Murray, and some of our BCDAs for Behavior Management. All of them are, if you're listening. What is the purpose of a Threat Assessment Team? So New Jersey mandated this in all New Jersey schools, some are ahead of others, I would say that we're pretty far ahead. The purpose of it is to help with school threats and overall just safety. So I always go to Blaskel here, where it says, "Ensure a safe and secure school environment that enhances the learning experience for all members of the school community." So really what it is, if a student makes a threat, says something to another student where it seems like it could be violent, we kind of look at this, assess the student's risk for like actually engaging in that violence, and make sure that we intervene immediately to ensure that it's not a true risk for a student. There's more to it, but you know, I don't want to read all the bullets for you. The state kind of gives you eight steps to complete, to kind of, in order to make a Threat Assessment Team. I can proudly say that this year, we have created all, we have finished all eight. I put kind of little half Cs on step three, because we're in the middle of figuring out how to create a central reporting mechanism for our teachers, but you'll see in a minute the steps to it, usually the teachers or whoever the staff members, just call it in, or a student will bring it in. But we put together our team, figure out which behaviors we're going to look for, determine when we would call the police, the LTPD, figure out how we're going to do the assessments, develop the risk management, make sure that we're doing the school climate, and make sure that all of our team has training. So all of our team does have training. So how does this happen? I'm Two to Eight, so I'm usually in our complex. Over at the other side in ADS, we have folks that do this too, but a threat is reported to us, whether it's through a teacher, a student, it can come from anybody in our building, but the threat is reported, and it's considered a level three, so there's never a time that this is going to be waved in, put in the genesis, it's like an immediate phone call, and wait on that phone call until an administrator or somebody on the team responds. So the threat is reported. The student is immediately called out of class, the belongings are searched, if it's a middle school student, their lockers are searched, their Chromebook cases are searched, everything is searched by me and the administrator. Our screening team, we have screening teams in all three buildings, immediately come together and complete a screener, which is kind of like, it screens a threat, sees if it is a true threat or something that we should investigate, or it could just possibly be a code of conduct response, where the student just gets a consequence. We've kind of played it safe this year, because we decided as a Threat Assessment Team, we'd rather play it safe than sorry, so I will tell you that almost all of ours go through the Threat Assessment in some type of way. We've never really let one go through. So if the threat does have possibility of credibility, the student is then suspended pending a cleared site evaluation, there's a full Threat Assessment by the team, and there is a plan for return. Not just like the student comes back and just starts all over again, there are interventions put in place, maybe a mentor for the student, there are so many things that we have put in place that we will get to in a little bit.
And so the trends that we have seen this year in Lumberton include verbal threats of violence, students who say that they would like to hurt another student, groups of students, teachers, even their parents. We have done evaluations on those kinds of threats, saying they have a weapon and they want to use it to hurt someone. And then really with the younger ones, we see a lot of threatening gestures, so, you know, pointing with their fingers, actually even making guns out of things like Legos we've investigated. So those are the trends that we're seeing in our schools. The supports that we put in place for the students include counseling, so that's both in-school and community counseling, partial care programs, that's where the child comes to school for half of the day, and then the other half of the day, they go to a counseling program. Again, I already touched upon counseling, diagnoses and referrals to the Child Study Team, so there are times where we will ask the Child Study Team to do formal testing if we feel that there is possibly also a learning disability occurring with that child. Mentors, so staff, administrators, teachers, checking in with the children. Once we do the evaluation, it's not like we just do the evaluation, make a recommendation, and that's it. We definitely value the follow-up piece, and the mentors are a big part of that. And then check in phone calls from home. From the minute that the threat is reported to us, Erica is usually the person who calls the parent, explains to them exactly what is going on, and then walks them through the entire process from start to finish. So we're really proud of this team, they work very hard, and assessment takes a very long time, it's extremely comprehensive, so we wanted to report some data. We looked at last year versus this year at this point in time, we have saved sixty-one days of suspension district-wide, and we're really proud of that. Looking towards next year, we were thinking about our goals. We definitely want to refine the screening tool that we have, so the screening tool was given to us by the state, it is a universal tool, and so we're finding some things that we would really like to fine-tune for Lumberton's purposes, so we definitely will be looking at that. We've already started to reach out to other districts to get ideas on how they're handling the process, especially the other districts that refer to Grand Focus Valley, we work closely with them. And then specifically the Ashbrook screening tool, because it is a universal tool, we're really finding developmentally areas where we want to ask those children different questions, phrase things differently, handle things differently, and so we will be looking at that specifically next year.
And then we're going to open it up to any questions. Now we kept it simple, but we'll kind of give you our focus and what we do with the year.
I have a question. Well, I'll start with a comment. Thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you for all the hard work, we know it, a lot of time, effort, and all of that. Are there requirements for reporting out on all the assessments that you make and the outcomes, and maybe not just like reporting to us at the board level, but to the state? Or what is that, have we gotten that far yet?
So the first requirement, and it's part of this grading process, is do you contact the police immediately? If we contact the police, the situation is removed from Lumberton's hands, and it becomes a law enforcement situation. Other than that, mandatory reporting could occur if we have concerns about abuse of a child, maybe that's why they're threatening, so we would call DCP and P. The state is not asking us bring data at this point in time, but I'm sure in this process, at some point they will.
And I know that we do report, because when there's a threat, the student is suspended, so we can like remove them and do that. So when our secretaries put things in our student information system that goes to the state, that data is reported there as well, so the state doesn't get that data through us.
Thank you.
I would just like to reiterate, I'm just so proud of the work that you've done, parent family especially, they spend hours planning the meetings together, they collaborate and really get into the thick of what these screening tools are about, and Ashbrook is a perfect example, because so much of it just doesn't apply to the youngins. The state even said that you can change the names, so that it's not Threat Assessment just sounds so threatening. So you're like considering all of those things, and just, and meeting to be, really be so thoughtful and careful, and then you're taking it to the team, and the team, you know, has spent countless hours as well, the team's met multiple times this year, met people in the room on that team, and just really, it's, they're all working sessions, it's where, you know, just working through how, what is this process like, and the net result is to me really impressive, sixty-one days of kids, you know, not being suspended means sixty-one days of learning that's happening thanks to you and your work, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to correspondence, this is the area that we will discuss, anything that's sent to the LTSD Solutions, new email. Nothing was sent prior to our last board committee meeting, but I did refer an email that was directed to the board, and another one that was directed to that for discussion at our next committee meeting, about apparent concerns or suggestions, so we'll discuss that at our next meeting, and report out anything that is an agenda item. Moving on to our normal committee reports, Ms. Smith, could you report on education?
Sure. The Education Committee met on April ninth, the English Language Arts Committee determined that the needs of Ashbrook are reading foundational skills, you know, letter sounds, how letters are put together from words. Bobby's Run and LM's Language Arts Committee did an NJSLA data review, the NJSLA is the state test. The conclusion, these grades two through eight, they need to focus on conventions, which is more like grammar and vocabulary, and grades three to five, they need word study and N-ling, which is spelling. The math coach will work with teachers on understanding the math standards and how to teach them. She has office hours, and she's been doing in-class, and she's available to do in-class coaching sessions. April nineteenth, the staff will review the components of a lesson together and organize manipulatives for the next math unit, that's tomorrow, right? And the High Impact Tutoring Program, which was a grant this year, out of twenty-two sessions that were planned, two were canceled by the provider. Overall, seventy-two percent of the students were present for all of the sessions, we can get money back from the vendor for the canceled sessions. Data will be put out next month for the results of the tutoring that was done. The middle school, Dr. Oswald, from Rowan, the Climate Grant, is working on helping us form a schedule. Right now, we have the WIN and STAR times may need to be looked at closely to assure that time is being used productively. Student liaisons mentioned that they would like to have something similar to the eighth grade dialogue with regards to the high school. There were staff and student focus groups, staff is discussing code of conduct, and students are discussing reasons for the dress code. The Young Republic will be at the June sixth Township Meeting, which is a nice session to watch. There was a trial run for the state test, there were no Wi-Fi issues, but there were some technology and support-related issues that, you know, it's good to iron out before we're taking the test. The Dreams Grant Award was started back in February, it's not a new initiative since we discussed pausing new initiatives in March. The grant is equal to a minimum of four thousand dollars for the Nurtured Heart Training. It is a service that helps us with proactive approaches to prevent student disciplinary problems. We're hoping for stabilization aid so that we won't have to make any cuts to our great programs, and there will be a June Teacher Appreciation in Service on June sixth. That's all I have, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Clevenger, update on operations?
Si is updating us on other committees, our new awards mostly discussed on the budget. We filed with the county, county came back with revisions. Dr. Murray went to the state to fight for more state aid. Bill forty-one sixty-one permits some school districts to restore state aid reductions, and we're going to wait and see what, if any money we get from that bill. And under new business, you'll see, we're going to discuss when we're going to have a budget meeting, a public budget meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Clevenger. I think that update on the bill too, I think it did pass the Assembly, and it's waiting for the Senate and Governor passage, so, again, any support that the public can do to support the S2 districts, much appreciated.
I'm grateful, sorry. And thank you to the PTA, I did see something about writing to help us, thank you for putting that out there.
Any further questions on operations? Mr. Collins, governance?
Everybody's met on April ninth at eight o'clock, my name is the utensils myself, Mr. Davis, Mr. Thomas, and Julie Anne. We discussed a little bit with the district communication as far as across committee knowledge, sometimes we sit here with the committee reports, and if you have any questions or maybe something I have, so Dr. Murray did put it out for us to all look at each other's agenda. Some of our members, Mr. Davis, our viewers, we discussed hopefully the options, so we did the committee structure, we should be committed as a whole, we've had that discussion before and past, so I think we do a pretty good job of getting into our questions, we have that forum here at this point. Threat Assessment Team, we talked about that, we had the update today, Young Republic, as mentioned by Mrs. Smith, it was on, gave them a plug, again, for May second, at the Township Meeting, it was made at seven o'clock, anybody that can make it?
That was changed to June sixth, there was a conflict.
June sixth, sorry about that.
Sorry, that was last minute.
Climate Grant Meeting, what we're looking at there is balance booked by May thirtieth, there should be a zero balance, because we are coming to the sunset of that grant, and we have to give zero balance, and we're not a business, we're a school, we have zero balances when we operate, so that money needs to be spent by that point. I'll reach out with a strategic goals survey, Dr. Murray came out to students, staff, and community, three separate surveys. There was a Vernon County Superintendent meeting, or Superintendent get-together with Chamber of Commerce, Kristi Howell, with all the budget cuts for S2, looking how to get creative in grade twenty across the county. Us, the leading district, I'm sure everybody's heard about, it's been in the news, just trying to get ideas out there and have raise money, Emily Womis, Andrew Katz, stated there were about ten or twelve bills for stabilization, and a forty-one sixty-one, I think it was the one that did pass, which waited for full approval there, I don't know if we threw anything. There was, there is currently discussion on shared services at a regional, our district site, so it's going to share among the RB district, just to hopefully cut down some costs here and there, some benefits currently being discussed, ways to create and help us legislate the S2 effect on our district. We'll see on today's agenda for secondary, for a number of policies, maybe a first meeting or last one. All right, very good meeting. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. At this time, the meeting will now be open to the public, referencing agenda items only. If your questions, comments, or any litigation, students, personnel, or negotiations, we would ask that you see the Superintendent after this meeting, since we do not discuss these items in publics. Please keep in mind that the public comment session is an opportunity to share opinions, and it's not a question-and-answer session. and is not a question and answer session. Dr. Murray and myself may respond to any comments made at the conclusion of the comment session. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person with a total comment period to one hour.
Louis O'Pitt, I need to love a try about how you're asking it. Well, thank you for giving a tour screen. For letting me know about this important meeting and support here for students, factories. Just curious, are you gonna have like a solar panel or a solar project in the future for this school? It could save a lot of energy. Like I do, I have solar panel, it saves a lot, I mean, a lot of energy. And I could see the usage is better, powered by the sun than powered by, it saves a lot of money. And this has been recorded and I want to put all the people that came to me, you know, thank you for recording the first meeting three minutes ago. And everybody appreciating their coming. Record this meeting at four K, stream it, live it, and it's on YouTube. Not as famous as you, but at least I get the word around, I support the teacher. And anybody can look at it as Louis O'Pitt at F-I-E-G-O-D-Dragon. G-O-R-A-D-D-O-N, F-I-G-O-Dragon at YouTube, thank you.
Seeing no further comments. You had a motion to approve superintendent's reports, number three?
So moved to all.
Second, Clevenger.
Dr. Murray, any kind of comments here?
Yes, thank you. Wanted to update about some upcoming events that you might be interested in. Next week, we have the safety expert from the NJ DOE who's coming to observe some more difficult drills. This is the third time he's been in our district because safety is a really important role for us. So we're excited to learn from that event. We're also hosting the Red Hookus Valley Region School District Roundtable this month here in Lumberton. It's the first time we'll be hosting, so we're excited about that. April twenty-fifth is Take Your Child to Work Day. April twenty-fifth is the PTA Ladies Night Out at the Indian Spring Country Club. The People's Choice Awards is May second. May eighth, tentatively, is the next student board liaison meeting. May tenth is the PTA Color Run. May twenty-second is the tentative board student liaison RV region discussion. We have to firm that up, but that's what we're hoping for. And so far, we have at least Mount Holly interested in coming. And then the Young Republic Town Council meeting is on the sixth. Couple of academics-related updates, project-based learning units are continuing. For instance, third grade classes took part in a Lumberton African-American genealogy project. Students learned about Lumberton's African-Americans, historical figures such as Lumberton's first African-American landowner, William Bone. Another example is the Roman Road Unit where some students actually made a Roman road with foodstuffs. They built it themselves with things like marshmallows. Teachers and staff in grades three to eight have run a second infrastructure. Marcy talked about the infrastructure trial. There were some kinks that we wanted to iron out and so ran a second one in a limited level to make sure that we're really, really confident with testing. There were a couple of hiccups that were rectified right away. How we may, the counselors and the principals should be really proud of their responsive and supportive work to alleviate some of the stress that can come along with testing. Middle school redesign work that was mentioned earlier continued today. We had a great meeting. Richard and Erica led the meeting and a team of a bunch of teachers that are here today as well. Really productive. Dr. Scott Oswald was there to help offer some insights. He's going to help, you know, kind of coach us through the process. Maybe he's a former superintendent and we had the climate grant money left over. We thought we wanted to leverage his expertise to just see if he can help us find any efficiency in our own way and any kind of great ways to think about how we structure our time.
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Kraft, could you please take role?
Dr. Brennan? Mrs. Clevenger? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Earl? Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Siri?
Yes.
Yes, motion passed. A motion to approve board resolutions minutes from the previous meetings, numbers one and two.
Second, Smith.
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Kraft, could you please take role?
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Clevenger?
Yes, to boring, I'm staying from two.
Mr. Collins?
I've stayed from one, yes to two.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
I've stayed from one.
Mrs. Siri?
Yes.
Mr. Leehan?
Yes, motions passed. In a motion to approve board resolutions, the superintendent's personnel recommendations, numbers one through seven.
So moves, Smith.
Second, Clevenger.
Dr. Murray, comments here?
Yes, please. Roseanne, the secretary at Ashbrook, has resigned and she's hoping to help out with substitute teaching next year. She's gonna be taking care of her grandchild. So we want to congratulate her for taking that step and thank her for staying with us. Patty Rosbald, very, very warm congratulations on her retirement. Bobby's run eight for fourteen years, works with special ed students, shows great caring and compassion for students and staff. We're hoping that we can talk her into coming back to volunteer in her daughter's class in Ashbrook. And Rachel Williams has been in the district for twenty-four years. She's mentored formally and informally. She's seen as a very strong leader in the district. She's a union leader. She organized the school-wide walkathon to raise money for cancer. She has inclusive classroom practices such as PBIS, Positive Behavior Support Intervention Systems. She did a lot of work on the code of conduct as well, so we wish her a very, very happy retirement.
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Kraft, could you please take role?
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Clevenger?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
I've stayed from five, yes to the rest.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
I've stayed from five because I'm a member of the NJEA to be conflicted on that. And yes to the rest.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Siri?
Yes.
Mr. Leehan?
Yes, motions passed. Can I get a motion to approve board resolution, superintendent's miscellaneous agendas, numbers one through four?
So moved to all.
Second, Clevenger.
Mr. Kraft or Dr. Murray, any comments on this section?
Yes, please. The EDC is taking a trip to Topco. I want to thank Diane Solin and her team for all the work they do to provide really great experiences for the kids at EDC. I'd also like to thank Return Kindness, the organization donated fifteen hundred dollars to the district for, to pay down the student lunch debt.
And then number four, the new founder just moved into the district, Mr. Stewart, students are being home schooled.
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Kraft, could you please take role?
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Clevenger?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Siri?
Yes.
Mr. Leehan?
Yes, motions passed. A motion to approve the board resolutions, business administrator's finance agenda, numbers one through six.
Second, Clevenger.
Second, Collins.
Kraft, any comments in this section?
Yes, number five is a shared service with Chesterfield for our physical therapist services. Number eight is an amendment that's taken back, it suggested we make that budget to the preschool grade.
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Kraft, could you please take role?
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Clevenger?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Siri?
Yes.
Mr. Leehan?
Yes, motions passed. A motion to approve the board resolutions, superintendent's policy recommendations, number one.
So moved to all. Second, Collins.
Any further questions or comments from the board on this? Seeing none, Mr. Kraft, could you please take role?
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Clevenger?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Earl? Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Siri?
Yes.
Mr. Leehan?
Yes, motion passed. I also then just like to recognize that we just passed the student liaison policy, so excited. You can see our placards up here, so at the next meeting, we will invite the students to sit up here as well with us as we work to, work together to encourage student voice in board meetings. So again, excited for that to pass. Moving on to new business, we have a few items here. Mr. Kraft, if you've got a couple, you know, can you talk a little bit about EDC?
Sure, so Mount Holly's decided to go a different direction with their EDC program, so they're going with an outside service. So they're no longer in Lumberton Services to help with their EDC program. So that's effective at the end of this year. And the second point I'd like to thank is Light House Church for their service and help in painting our bathrooms in the complex here, as well as in Ashbrook, they painted a couple as well. So this is Saturday, two weeks ago, where they came in and helped out the district in a way that's...
And then my item here, again, this is just an ask for board members. The township has invited us to participate in the Memorial Day Parade. On Memorial Day, I know Marcy, you've participated in that in the past, so looking for some board volunteers to help assist with the brief presentation that we participate with with the PTA as well. Any board member, please confirm if you're available and able to assist in that event. And then a couple other just key dates from a board perspective, I just wanted to call out to the Burlington County School Boards Association has their next meeting upcoming. So again, looking for participation there if anyone's available. And then the delegate assembly is coming up in May, I think it's May eighteenth. So again, we'll have time at our next board meeting to discuss any resolutions that come up as part of delegate assembly, but looking for participation there as well. And then again, encouraged as that RV Dialogue meeting that we're working on scheduling with the student liaisons in coordination with other rising eighth graders to participate and host there. So excited for that event to get off the ground and encourage board member participation there as well. So that's all I have for my events. Any other questions from the board on that?
I wanted to ask Mr. Kraft about that. Did they give a reason for why they're not using Lumberton or EDC?
They're stable, they were looking to get more involvement with the HPC sort of students, so somebody who could have been more, be able to educate the students a little more than our staff could, if they were to.
And then last on the agenda is a discussion on our next public meeting, which was scheduled to be April twenty-ninth, but with some other updates. Mr. Kraft, could you kind of give the board an update on with the county?
Sure, with the county returning the budget, some modifications to be made. When it was resubmitted, they suggested that we move our date back a little bit. So right now, it's scheduled for twenty-ninth, they suggested we push it back just to give them time to review all of the changes. And then we also have to publicly authorize it for four days before we can hold that meeting. So it's just that a precaution, they recommend to delay it for a few days. So we're recommending that we have it on May seventh, which is actually the last day we're able to have it. So that'd be our recommendation is to have it on May seventh. The only conflict with May seventh is that it's our community meeting as well.
Hopefully, the board members are available that day, since it's our regular scheduled committee meeting that we would look to advertise as our public budget meeting. I guess the other consideration too, I believe that you mentioned that the senate is expected to begin discussion on the bill that may impact the budget. So if perhaps that passes on the sixth, it may give us an extra day to react and respond. I don't know when it moves coming, we'll see. Seeing head nods from board members on May seventh, that's...
What would an EDC like that look at?
I believe once we confirm any like business items that may need to be also approved in that meeting, we would have a regular business meeting potentially at that meeting as well, like we had originally scheduled. And if there's enough topics to discuss in committee meeting, we may look for an alternate date for the committee meeting if there's a desig. But otherwise, we would look to discuss anything as a full board and public at that public meeting if it is to be doing. Anything needs to be approved or discussed. So that's all we have for new business, any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, now the meeting will be open to the public referencing any item. Again, if your questions, comments pertaining to litigation, students, personnel, or negotiations, we would ask that you see the superintendent after the meeting, since we do not discuss these in public. Please keep in mind that the public comment section is an opportunity to share your opinions and remarks and is not a question and answer session. Dr. Murray or myself may respond at the conclusion of the comment section. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person with a total comment period no longer than an hour.
Hi, good evening, TJ Martino, creative science teacher, also LTA secretary. We as educators understand that this is a difficult time with budgets, cuts, things of that nature that need to be done. But we also would ask that this decision should not just be made by one person alone. There's so much doubt and see that's involved in this. We obviously don't want to see any of our staff leave, but we understand that that is going to happen. But we also hope that the decisions are made accurately and correctly. Because, you know, as we start meeting and discussing things with just business around as an LTA, cuts that are going to be made, obviously are going to impact a lot if it goes on this district. Just last week, we had a meeting and I think some of the cuts that may be made may impact some of this. I had a difficult time sleeping after one of our meetings because I've been in this district for twenty-six years and I listened to some of the really horrific things that have been taking, that have taken place with some, towards our staff and to some of our students in this district. Biting, kicking, chairs being thrown at staff members, abusive language, being spit on. And I only ask, as a board, I know it's a difficult thing, sitting on there, you're volunteers. And I know it's tough, I know it's not easy, you spend a lot of time going over a lot of things that we've heard tonight. But things like this should not happen, especially in the Lumberton, and I've been part of for twenty-six years. I only ask that we look at these situations, talk to the people that are involved. To my knowledge, there's been twenty-six documented cases of these things so far. And that's just in Ashbrook alone. We need to look a little deeper as to what the problems are so that these kinds of things don't happen, that our students don't have to come to school afraid and worried. Our staff members don't have to worry if they're going to be injured or hurt as a result of this. So I only ask that we look at this a little bit more closely. Something needs to be done. Thank you.
Mary Lee, second grade social studies teacher, and softball coach. Good evening. Tonight I'll be reading a statement from our president, Jim Hamlet, who couldn't be here for the family obligation, and myself. I can't believe that this is the third meeting where a large contingent of people have attended and there has still been no movement from you. the Board of Education. What are you doing? Do you have a plan? If you do, and I certainly hope you do, why is it not being shared with the many stakeholders that you represent? Staff and residents have poured their hearts out to you, and honest and factual anecdotes have been shared, and what can we hear? Nothing. Crickets. How come there has been no feedback from the board? The email that you gave for people to send in their issues is a lame attempt at trying to smooth over the legitimate concerns that many of us have. Yes, the LTA is an organized group, a union of people who work together for the common good. As educators, we want to be taken seriously. We want the children that we educate to learn as much as they can in the eight plus years that we have them, so they can go out into the world with the best chance of success. I believe that is what you would want as well, or you would not be sitting in front of us tonight volunteering your time. Yet there are known comments made from certain board members that they don't have to listen to us because we are just a union. Is this really where we are? Do we have union busters on the board? This union, the LTA, wants only to be treated like equal participants. But not once in the past two years have you reached out to see what is needed from us. You didn't reply when we reached out twice this year to discuss the implosion in our district. You didn't reach out when mold invaded our schools and uprooted the complex. You didn't reach out twice when the DCPP IAU has returned unfounded results, yet you and the superintendent refused to accept or support their unbiased findings. Why is this? Boards of education are supposed to work with the people they have hired and entrusted with their most valuable assets, the children. Yet you choose to sit there in silence as if we are not even here. If it wasn't obvious enough already, we are here, and we are not going away until you do something. To add, the LTA has grave concerns about the possible extension of the superintendent's contract that will most likely be addressed in the next two months. I always begin, what is your plan? The fact that this evaluation is based on self-reflection and the super's own personal self-evaluation is criminal. Make it make sense. Why are you not asking all stakeholders to evaluate all admin? We used to do that, and guess what? It worked. Teachers are not self-evaluated, we have admin come and judge us on how we do our job. Why is the highest ranking admin not treated the same way? We know how the evaluation works. If five of you agree with a positive, the four who did not have know or have no say are just not listening. How can they trust you to do this fairly? The answer is that we cannot, because at this point, we have no faith in this board to make decisions that make sense. We urge the board to change up how you do the superintendent's evaluations. And now you ask parents and staff to contribute, or are you too afraid to know what you're here? To be clear, we have had over sixty percent of our units, our union, in attendance over the last two months. You may not have seen a hundred percent of us, but know we all support one another and will fight together for the common good, which is to change the direction of this downward spiral that our beloved district is currently finding itself in. It is time for this district to move forward. We need leadership that will assist us in the healing process caused by the pain and suffering of the last twenty months. I'm imploring you to wake up and do what is right by the people you represent, the parents, the students, and yes, the union. You are all elected officials, charged by this community to maintain an educational system that is sound and just. You are currently failing your duties. If you want to make a difference, then realize what changes need to happen, and it needs to happen now.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Amarna, one more church, my home is church, not a hospital. I came here because I want to rehash the things from the last meeting that I was, that I was here to attend. First and foremost, I want to thank the teachers have, who have been here since my children been here in twenty sixteen, the educators who are here day out, day in and day out, who support, who influence, who encourage, and who inspire. That I want to thank you. It's very important that I say this because, one, I have my youngest who was on IMP, who had developmental disability. And because of the help that Lumberton provided, my son is no longer in special needs, and that was in preschool. My son is driving him to fifth grade. That speaks volumes. The thing is, is that it takes a village, and part of that, the teachers are part of that village, and they deserve our respect as a community, and they certainly deserve your respect, because they're in the trenches, they're in that classroom, day in and day out, five days a week, eight hours, and sometimes Saturdays, they're standing intentions. They're there. Reason why that I want to speak is because for this year, I've seen a lot of things that I am definitely not happy with. One of the things that I wasn't happy with was, yes, listen, talk about was the mold situation. You know, one of the things that concerned me was, the first thing that concerned me was the, the health of my children. Half of the school being sent home on remote, the other half being forced to go into that same school. You're forcing teachers and students to be in a situation where there are health concerns. And yet, it's not taken into account for when the doctor is sending a doctor's note in and it's being rejected by a higher up. The problem that I'm also having is the fact that what I want to know, did any of one of you, when, when the mold was clean, any one of you sit in those classrooms that had the mold during that time? Because I'm sure the teachers and the students, my children included, had to sit in those classrooms for that time, that you're sending them to go in and learn and possibly inject some of this, these chemicals or some of this mold. And what that is, that's considered gross negligence, and that makes it a liability for a lawsuit. Because trust me, the first thing when I found out about the mold, I put my children, tried to get them a doctor's note to see if there was any, anything going on, they ing- and, and just because, if, if there was mold in the summertime, then that means everyone who came to the school for back to school, they was affected or affected to some diff- capacity. My second concern is when you had the community forum, it was from seven to eight PM, and I was on that Zoom call, and that Zoom call was twenty-seven minutes. There was no public, uh, crowd, there was no, couldn't even communicate, we could not address vocally. And the problem is that I feel is that you're controlling the dynamic, you're controlling the narrative and not letting us speak. And because at the end of the day, yes, as a parent, I was outraged, because my son was in van, he was in van for two weeks while this mold was growing in these different classrooms. And yet, no one sat there and did their investigation, any inspection, or was prevented in that manner to make sure that nothing like that occurred. Not to mention, you know, these last, or I'll say, beginning of the year, and I think you talked about this with the September letter, we all know that it is a national, it's a national day tragedy, especially those who lived it, who were alive at that, at that time. As I said, a particular day, which I had the emails that I printed out, was the shelter in place when there was a nine threat. And the thing is that the problem that I had is, is there is no effective communication to the parents, to the communities. When you're, when you're telling me that nine eighteen that morning, that there was a possible outside threat, and then in the same email, you're telling me, please do not come up to the school, you are causing hysteria, you think I'm not going to be concerned about my children? Of course I'm going to be concerned, and if anything's happening, I'm going to be right there. And that's the problem. There is, it is poor choices of words, it's poor, it's use of how to handle these situations, it's not effective communication. And that's a, there's a breakdown, because I have a good rapport with my son's teachers, and I try to make it, best to make sure that my children, I am involved as much as I can, and I'm involved in, in talking with these teachers as well, because they are part of my children's village. But if there's a communication breakdown amongst the top, you are cutting, honestly, you are cutting the, the teachers from any access to bring any possibility future for my children. You're cutting that off for them because at the end of the day, they need their support. And I'm just saying, being a teacher, let me tell you, I couldn't do that. Because it's one thing to do that for your own, but to do, to get up every day and support somebody else's children, to help them succeed, that is selfish, and that deserves your respect. Thank you.
Okay, um, Danielle Amarna, eighth grade student, and so you heard from my mom, now you're going to hear from me. As an eighth grade student, like, been here for three years now, I, I LMS, there's been a lot of changes, and I think that you honestly, you really have to listen, you, you really have to learn how to listen. Because from what I'm listening to, like, from the teachers, listening from the parents, listening to the students, I mean, there's a lot that really needs to be done, like, just like at the beginning of the year with the schedule change, and like, star win, and all like the locker changes, like, that anger a lot of students. And the whole thing, like, with the education and like the, everything that the teachers need from you guys, you're not really providing that. And the thing is, you have to reach out to the students, and you have to reach out to the parents, you have to reach out to the teachers, because you can't expect everyone to just give you what you need, you need to be the ones to reach out and give it to them. Because you can't just sit there and do nothing on it. I mean, I, as a student, have to go to school five days a week, and well, I'm sitting in that classroom, and honestly, I don't see, you guys don't see what I have to do day in and day out, you don't see what these teachers have to do, and you don't see what the parents think about when they're making sure that their kids are getting a good education and making sure that their safety is, is in check. And my mom, she honestly, like, she was worried about me and my brother with all of these situations with the mold, with nine eleven, as she described, and well, you're not making sure that everyone in the school, in the district, is being cared for and making sure that their, that their needs are met. And so I ask you, when will that happen? Because it needs to happen sooner, not later, because if you keep on waiting, people are going to pass you by. And well, it's not going to work out. And so, so let off, you guys need to actually to give, to listen to me, because if you're not going to listen, then you're not going to get anything done. Thank you.
You got it, you got it.
Um, my name is Volta Amarna, you heard from my family, the oldest from the family. Um, now it's time you're going to hit the mic. Good evening, everyone. I hope you've been having a great little board meeting, because of, all I've seen, all I see that you do is you act like you're on this little throne, you act like you're in charge of everything. But, I, I work every day to make sure that my classmates and my friends are going to have a good life in middle school and bottom school. Because every day, I have to make sure that everyone is doing good, and I have to be a good example for everyone as well. So I started sign shows when I was younger and, and this year. Um, I sent a lot of things to Ms. Erica Hulk. Um, I wanted to make sure that my, yes, society, my community was okay, yeah, and I can hear these teachers and how they feel. It's just, how, what are you doing? Because they're, they're explaining what they feel about you, and yet you still haven't done anything. You act like everything is okay, I see you, I see you, because I keep on seeing that you smile every day, but nothing's going on, but then later on, I see that even when I'm in the board meeting, it's like everything is going on, and it's like you're doing nothing about it, all of you, and even when I can see that you are right here, I feel like you do nothing. I can just see all these teachers and all these administration staffs, and then I just feel like they're happy, because if they were, they wouldn't feature today and right now. If they were, then they would have, then they would have done it for a good reason. It's because you're not doing your job good enough. If you were, then why is this happening? Why do I have to go through this every day? It's like chaos and nonsense. I see my classmates, some of them are doing good, and they're trying to have good lives, while others, they're just trying to mess up their day because they hate school, or they just don't want to be there. And yet, every day at recess, there's some problem with the classes, there is always a problem. Either when it's in general, it's in any class, there's always a problem somewhere. And sometimes I just feel like you're not thinking down deep enough. It's like you're going to the surface, you're never going down to get to the gritty. You always just go, you have to go down, and but I just feel like you're not doing your job. I just feel like you're not doing your jobs. I just feel like we need to do more. And I just need you to do more, because all of these teachers feel like they're, like they're afraid of something that they shouldn't be, their students should be behaving and being good role models together. That's all I would like to say.
Hi, everyone, Anne Putnam, thirteen Cottonwood Drive. I'm here tonight because I think I need you to do a little more too. I want to reference the state aid, um, you know, what, what was discussed at the last meeting, and I want to know, I want you to know that I feel like the board did not really reach out to our community to engage the community in looking for support. I want to give Colleen credit, because she did send out an email to the parents in the district, um, and that letter gave some good direction. And I want to give our PTA credit for sending out the actionnetwork.org link on April fifteenth, when in that action network, it said, "We need your help by April fourteenth and fifteenth." It was such a last minute plea to kind of coordinate that big surge of support. I must have missed what the board did to communicate to our community. What did you do to reach out to the constituent, to your community that voted for you into this position to take care of the budget for our schools? What did you do to ask them to help? The loss of the state aid is going to be significant to our school, and it's going to impact programs and teachers and resources for the school, and you have a responsibility to ask for help, not just to the parents of the students in the school, but to the entire community. Maybe I missed it, please let me know if I missed it, because if not, I need you to do more.
Seeing no more comments? Dr. Mary, any comments?
Just a little bit, um, it is really hard for me to hear the sentiment that, you know, we're not listening and that we're not responding. Um, so for me, the perfect example of how I'm... It's like when my husband, he turns the blender on right when I'm talking, he's like, "What? I can't hear you." No, I, there's, you know, the perfect example is the school discipline topic. That was one of the first things that I heard when I came here was, discipline's different today, you know, kids are, are, you know, the behaviors are a little bit different. Um, I went to a seminar this morning, and that's what they, they talked about, they showed research, and, and it's not just COVID, it's over the last twenty years, discipline has been getting... It's over the last twenty years, discipline has been getting more and more extreme in, in the classroom. And so, you know, as a result, we've taken the board, with the board's support, we've taken so many steps to improve it and we're making gains. The threat assessment team presentation that you saw tonight is the perfect example. For us to have collaboratively, together, saved sixty-one days of student learning, um, is incredibly significant. And that shows that we have a learning mindset and what, that we see that we can take control of this. We can do this together. As far as discipline goes, some early steps that I took was we hired two board certified behavior analysts. That, that's a very new concept. We were one of the first districts to do it. Um, and these people can help coach teachers in how to respond, how to prevent. We also created a pathway for our aides to become certified as registered behavior technicians, which is a big deal. Uh, they get a significant pay bump, they get benefits. It's hard, it's not easy, um, but it's, it's proving fruitful. We're starting to see the, the benefits of that, of that process. That was not easy and that was just something that we did, you know, to try to respond to your requests, see teachers' requests and parents' requests. Mr. Lee Van Fleet, along with lots of help, um, that, you know, just got that Dreams Foundation grant. That's a more recent thing. That's so that we can, because the funding cuts, we have to look for creative ways to do that. And so that's to bring in this concept called, you know, nurtured heart that we're already starting to dive into that can really help us prevent, really is about preventing those extreme behaviors like fighting in the preschool classroom. The code of conduct, um, creating a position for Ms. Hulk uh, and then hiring and finding Ms. Hulk, who was just the right person, who had experience writing a code of conduct. This was something that was asked for, for months and this was something we responded to as a district. And, and, you know, it's made huge headways. They've, they've had focus groups with students and teachers to revise it. So it's not like it's a one and done process. It's not perfect. I know that, you know, we need more time. I, I agree. And, and that's what we're doing. And so, and that's as a response because we're trying to listen. And, uh, so to me, that's just one of the perfect examples of how I really, I believe that I speak for the board, that we care deeply and we want to hear your voice. We've taken student liaisons. We've, we've made so many steps to try to bring voice together and it's only going to get better. I think that we, if we sit down together, we do like we did today with the middle school schedule and we sit down together and we try to work together to fix all of the problems that we see. We can do this and, and we can, and we are. We're, we're getting better and better by the day. Thank you for listening.
And I do just want to add the concerns about the board maybe not listening or the perception of not listening. I just trust that, you know, speaking on behalf of the board, that, you know, we're all honored, um, to represent the community and, and the district. And we're bound by kind of school ethics codes as far as what we can and cannot do and say, and bound by contracts and whatnot within, um, the authority that we're given, um, here. And any communication that comes from me has come helped through, um, our board solicitor and whatnot. So again, just trust that we're working together as a board that we hear you and that we want to address those concerns, but we have to do it in evaluations and, and kind of what we're instructed to by school boards and through our board solicitors. So again, just thank you for that feedback and know that, you know, your concerns and, um, opinions are, are heard and, and discussed, um, within the board. With that, whereas the Senator Byron and their public, open public meetings act requires all meetings in Lumberton Township Board of Education be held in public, there's non-texty matters that may be discussed in executive without the public being able to attend. We do have, um, four items on our executive contact, uh, and action. Uh, there's, the action will be taken. I would expect this to last around forty-five minutes. I made a motion to go into executive session.